We're going to call this meeting's order. Today's date is August 1st, 2022, and this is the Tull City Common Council meeting. Everybody complete stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and may be seen. All right, first we have adoption of the agenda. Counsel, if there's anything you'd like to add to the agenda? If there's nothing to add, I intend a motion to adopt. Motion made by Julie here, second?
Second.
Seconded by Gary. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next, have our minutes. We've got two steps to approve in here. One from June 20th, of the special, and also your July 7th. There are no corrections or changes to those minutes, I intend a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary here, second? Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion?
I have to abstain from the July 7th.
Okay. All right. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, just John abstaining from the ones from the 7th. Okay. Next item is comments of citizens. I believe we've got a few citizens here that have some comments to make, so if you could, whoever wants to go first could step up to the microphone and state your name and address, and I believe you're with the organization, that'd be great too. We appreciate it.
I'm Brenda Poll. My address, my Legion's address is 1914 Main Street, Tull City. I'm representing the Tull City American Legion Auxiliary Union at 213. Dear Mayor Kell, City Council members and the Committee for the ARPA Fund, the Tull City American Legion, plus 213 and the Auxiliary has been an active non-for-profit organization for many years in this community. As the new year starts, the Auxiliary is celebrating 101 years and Legion is celebrating 102 years. Most of those years, we have had an active charter for both, for both, in Tull City. COVID-19 affects every community, our veterans and our organization. We have lost members and communities for it because of COVID-19. We are still fighting for our veterans and for all that they do and have done for our country. After making a few changes, a lot of work, these things are starting to improve. Just recently, we've helped, the Legion Riders has helped to benefit for a local veteran who is suffering from PTSD and other things from the Gulf War. The Auxiliary has had a craft fair, the SLA has had chicken dinners, and the Legion has helped drawings and giveaways every week, plus many other things to build our business by. The one thing it has bad is the building structure. It was rebuilt from a fire in the 70s with a flat roof and the roof leaking. With any given night of rainy weather, there are buckets sitting in the dining room, kitchen and bar. Besides not being healthy, it is hazardous. At this time, the Legion is signing papers to borrow the money to do the roof repairs on a payment plan. And the Auxiliary is trying to raise funds to help and to just operate. The Auxiliary is trying to make the club a healthy place to visit for our veterans and families by painting the bar, dining room, and putting air filters in, and especially by replacing the nasty carpet. We've tried to try to clean it, but it is bad. We love our veterans, our organization and our city. I ask you, Mayor Kell, the City Council and the Board members, to help us in supporting our organization. It would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for all you do sincerely. Kevin, Bruce, Senator Commander, and Brenda Poll, in the yellow and past president.
Counsel, you actually also have a copy of this letter too, to refer back to. Thank you Brenda for reading that. Do you guys have any questions or comments for Brenda? Thank you Brenda for that very nice letter, and we definitely appreciate the American Legion and all you've done for our community and continue to do, I'm sure, so thank you very much. The ARPA thing, we're gonna have, they just sent somewhat final drafts of the application? Yeah, so it's moving along a lot better now. We're getting there. I'm really pleased with that. And just, I've got the VFW, American Legion, and KFC all through here. They all are accepting memberships. If any of you want to be sons of the American Legion, sons of the VFW, I'm a member of both, a son. I don't know about KFC, but my Catholic, I don't know if you can remember that, but might be able to stop me, I don't know. So I would join, but my Catholic, so kinda puts the brakes on that one. But I do have, you know, my father and my grandfather and many family members back have all served overseas, and so we're very appreciative of our veterans and everything they've done. We have another member of the public here that would like to come up, so I'll let you come up and make any comments you'd like to address to the council. I knew you addressed the ARPA committee last week, and so we told you to come back and bring this to the council, so he's gonna have some recommendations for budget timing, and so, how about it?
My name's Cheryl Davis, I'm the commander for the VFW down here at 301 Main Street, Tull City, Indiana. And I want to thank, most of all, thank y'all for, you know, gave us the approval, and thank for retiring the flags on the 9th of October. The ceremony was very holy, it's small, little ceremony, but hopefully it's growing. So we thank you for that and everything. Also, for what I've seen, hearing so far, I appreciate the hearing about this workshop coming up and everything. I'm gonna knock on wood, thank you very much. I'm not gonna anybody in County D. Somebody's kinda stepping up to play a little bit more, so we thank you. Thank you all. Hopefully the workshops will get going. And also, last week, we made an ask for a donation letter thing. We've got one of our quotes from one of the companies here, Valley Supply here in Tull City. They've got one more coming, hopefully tomorrow, I think, and then I'll have a donation letter for you all in September and everything. And that way, they'll let you know everything while we need it, and then hopefully the ARP also will come along here pretty soon, and we can get some help for everything with that and also things. So like I said, I'm just sending the city a donation letter from the VFW, and y'all can, and I know we could go either way, yay, nay, whatever, it's all gonna be hard to try, but we could definitely use some help and everything. We've kinda got hit pretty hard and everything, the air conditioning units and everything, the closer we're getting, they're very, very high. We are, I am turning to the VFW members and to see what all help they can get along and everything. I've got some donations, some help, and people are saying that they would help down the road and everything. But right now, this is where I'm at, and I will have your donation letter, Mayor Kay, Mayor Chris, excuse me, Mayor Chris, in September and everything, and then we'll go over from there. And I thank you all very much for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you all do too. Very appreciative. I grew up in the VFW, my grandpa would take, pick me up every Friday, and I'd go back there and clean the room where they played cards. My job was to clean the ashtrays, back when we used to talk about smoking in places, and I'd get a pack of M&amp;Ms and a Coke for doing that every Friday.
Did you do a good job?
Yeah, I got paid an M&amp;Ms and a Coke. It was fun, you know, it's good memories, so.
We retarded the ashtrays, so.
Oh yeah, yeah, no smoking in there. It was kinda gross, you know.
Let's still find some M&amp;Ms to go in. And most of all, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, please come by from 12 to about 6:30 and everything. We have good down-home country meals, my wife and everything, yeah. She fixes them every Thursday and Friday, and there's a venue on Facebook, VFW Facebook and everything, and then I think they, I think they still give it to Tull City back there.
I got roast beef on Thursday.
Yes, sir.
I saw it on, that sounded good.
It is good, mashed potatoes, green beans, plenty of butter rolls and everything, and homemade, all kinds of pie or cakes, and I won't say it out too loud, but I don't wanna stampede. There's a lot of, a few blackberry cobblers that come in and everything, and we had to get the police department to escort the gentleman and his family from Portland, Wyoming, just to get everybody. That's all, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments before we move on? Okay. Committee and Ward reports. Councilmember Cleveland couldn't be here this evening, so let's move on to Ward 2. Julie Conner, just to give your partners some pride. You can announce that too, as far as your reports.
My partners in pride is Charles and Mary Goblin.
Okay.
9/21/16. I do have, do you have some?
Yeah, I have one of them. Do you have any more down there?
No, you gotta, she'll come take yours and you get, she gets it.
Okay. Yeah.
Plan Commission, we will have a meeting 18th. It's a week later because those flights are fast. It is already, there's something on the agenda, so I know we're having it. And we did have an LEPC Zoom meeting last Monday. Probably nothing very clear on that. That's it.
All right, thank you. Ward 3, vote.
Not much of a report. I've been getting out and talking to superintendents. I'm trying to just see how everything's going and see what ARPA requests they have.
I'd heard he spent about three hours of print.
Yeah, he's a big, he has a lot of information.
He said you really enjoyed it. I did a lot.
He took me all around town and showed me, so it was great.
But glad you did that.
Absolutely.
Anything else though?
Nope, that's it.
All right, move on to Ward 4. Gary Morton.
Uh, nobody wore it.
Oh, recycling. How's our boards? All right, we'll try, moving on to Council Arch, John Little.
No report, but just several people that a lot of things going on around town, you know, people were wondering and concerned and all this, but people think it's good to see all this action happening around town as far as all the road work, of course, it's kind of an inconvenience, it's gonna be, but they see it as real positive, so I think people are happy to see some work like that going on around here, so.
Oh yeah, thank you.
So I did mention at that last meeting, I noticed somewhere I thought they had completed the work and it didn't look real great. So they've been redone with a couple of heads, so it's looking actually very nice.
Good.
So maybe they weren't really done from the beginning and it looked like it was, but anyway, they do work.
And I've had a lady reach out to me regarding the Highway 66 project, and she was worried if it's a city project or state project, and that is a state project. So she called the state to talk to them about the concerns that she had with me. State told her, we don't have a project there. So I don't know what on earth, who she got hold of. I mean, she called the number I gave her, and that was the right number, because then I called them. They told me the same thing. So I thought, okay. So they've got something wrong in their computer or something, unless they came to the wrong city during the work, but I don't think that's the case.
Some contractors just are freelancing that whole project.
Hey, that's what a deal, right? You got that thick or nothing? I was kinda lost on that, but her concerns have been sent to the right people, so hopefully it gets taken care of. So any statements or comments from the city attorney or the clerk treasurer?
Working, working, working on budgets.
All right.
Touch on the ordinance is down in new business.
Okay. All right, that's all the committee and board reports. There's nothing but old business, so just moving on down now to new business. Ordinance vacating a portion of 18th Street and an unnamed alley. So this is, the city attorney's got this, or?
This is actually, yeah, this is actually the timetable for a public hearing. Our public hearings with the council are obviously pretty informal in these matters. I know Larry's out, but I'm pretty sure Julie was at the Plan Commission when this matter was discussed. I see Joanne is here. This is a very non-controversial petition to vacate a street and alley. Joanne Mom's property. I think, spoken with Greg Schnar, the attorney who handled this, Greg's sick tonight and couldn't be here, and Joanne, if I say anything wrong about what we're vacating, you jump right in here. We're basically vacating the alley and what would be the street in front of, where Joanne's at Mom's houses over there. You guys are probably all familiar with this, off of Brushy Fork Road before you get to VIP on the right. In talking with the attorney, the problem with having these streets there is that it's difficult to sell this property. No title insurance company's gonna issue a title insurance policy with the thought that at least in theory, a municipality could come in there and build an alley and a street. Now, we all know that the city's never gonna come in there and build in those locations, but that's the reason they were petitioning to vacate this. It was presented appropriately to the Plan Commission. Plan Commission issued a unanimous favorable recommendation to the council, and so the council's job is to ultimately adopt an ordinance that would formalize this in the event that the council agrees and wishes to vacate this alley, this street and this alley. So that's kinda the spiel for this, since Mr. Schnar couldn't be here tonight. I just wanted to make everybody, bring everybody up to speed on what this actually is. If you've got any questions, I can try to answer it, and I bet you Joanne can answer as many as I can.
So Counsel, if there are no questions, I intend a motion for the first reading of ordinance. Number 1191, motion made by Julie here, second?
Second.
Seconded by Phillip. Any further discussion? If you're none, we'll call for a vote. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Jeff, you may proceed with the first reading of ordinance number 1191.
I will note, when I get to the legal descriptions of the property, I'm going to just indicate that these are the legal descriptions of the property rather than read the entire legal description.
Yeah, the only thing Greg asked is that would you email him that? Can you email that? All that, what are you doing here?
Yes, yes, we will email that.
He's got to call me in, he figured we'd hear. He didn't think you guys wanted him.
No, I called him on the phone, I offered to zoom in, and he said Jeff, hand it over. I said, yeah, I don't want you here if you got that. Don't bring it.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 1191. Ordinance vacating a portion of 18th Street and an unnamed alley in the city of Tull City, Perry County, Indiana. Whereas on June 10th, 2022, Mary F. Hurst, life tenant, Joanne Schroeder, Ann Robert Ravens Jr. and Charlene S. Ravens, surviving spouse of Gary L. Ravens, deceased, filed their petition for the vacation of portions of 18th Street and unnamed alley in the city of Tull City, Indiana. Whereas on July 14th, 2022, the Tull City Advisory Plan Commission conducted a hearing on the petition to vacate and made a favorable recommendation to the common council on the petition. And whereas the common council, the city of Tull City, did set the first day of August 2022 at 6:00 PM as the date, time and place for public hearing on said petition. And whereas the common council for the city of Tull City now finds that notice of the filing of said petition and the time and place for hearing on said petition has been duly made in accordance with the provisions of Indiana Code Section 36-7-3-12C, in that all abutting property owners which abut the street and alley to be vacated to a depth of two landowners have been notified. That due notice, the hearing was published in the Perry County News, as evidenced by proof of publication given in the Perry County News, and that a copy of said proof of publication is on file in the Office of the Clerk Treasurer of the city of Tull City, Indiana. And whereas the common council for the city of Tull City, after being duly advised, has determined that various utilities have consented to the vacation, and that any vacation shall be subject to the existing easements for such utilities. And whereas the common council for the city of Tull City is determined that the hearing on the petition has been held in accordance with law, that said hearing is being conducted in accordance with the provisions of Indiana Code Section 5-14-1.5, that no remonstrances or objections have been filed or presented by an aggrieved person, and that therefore the petition filed by the petitioner should be granted. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council for Tull City, Indiana as follows. Number 1, Section 1, that the following described real estate is vacated from and after passage of this ordinance. A portion of 18th Street located east of Brushy Fork Road between blocks 225 and 245 in the city of Tull City, Indiana, being more particularly described as follows, and then a meets and bounds description of .280 acres is included in the ordinance. Also a block, also a part of the 20-foot unnamed alley located southeast of Brushy Fork Road and within block 225 in the city of Tull City, Indiana, being more particularly described as follows, and then a description of .046 acres is included in the ordinance. Section 2, pursuant to Indiana Code Section 36-7-3-16, this petition for vacation shall not deprive any public utility of the use of all or part of said public way or public place to be vacated if, at the time of the proceedings, the utility is occupying and using all or part of the public way or public place for the location and operation of its respective facilities. Number 3, Section 3, the clerk treasurer of the city of Tull City, from and after the passage of this ordinance, is hereby directed to furnish a copy of this ordinance to the Perry County Recorder and the Perry County Auditor for filing in their respective offices. Number 4, Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after it has been signed by the presiding officer of the common council and approved and signed by the mayor, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Tull City, Indiana, this first day of August 2022.
Okay, Counsel, you have the first reading of ordinance number 1191. If there are no further discussion or any intent of motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only. Motion made by Gary here, second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? If you're none, we'll call for a vote. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jeff, you may proceed with second, third reading of ordinance number 1191.
Thank you. Ordinance number 1191. Ordinance vacating a portion of 18th Street and an unnamed alley in the city of Tull City, Perry County, Indiana. Reading number 3, ordinance number 1191. Ordinance vacating a portion of 18th Street and an unnamed alley in the city of Tull City, Perry County, Indiana.
Okay, you've got first, second, third reading of ordinance 1191. If there are no other questions, I intend a motion to adopt. Motion to adopt. Motion made by Phillip here, second?
All seconded.
Seconded by Gary. Any last further discussion? If you're none, we'll call for a vote. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all.
I will email it out.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, we know that item B, ordinance authorizing transfer of real estate to non-for-profit entities. Jeff, just can you summarize the one-minute background of why this is required, and then we'll proceed with the one.
I can back here this real quick. There's a couple of properties that have already been authorized by the Board of Works to transfer to not-for-profit entities. 322 Fourth Street, which is the former Patrick Martin property.
Ninth Street.
Ninth Street, sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
222 Ninth.
222 Fifth.
Ninth, 222 Ninth Street.
There you go. The intention is to transfer that property to Indiana landmarks. They are going to commit to spending a substantial sum of money to rehabilitate that and place certain covenants on the property and ultimately either sell the property or convey it to another entity.
What's the address?
222.
222 Ninth.
222 Ninth.
It's right across from the Gail's Hotel. The porch is all sagging and falling, it's kind of a barn-shaped looking house.
It's bad, and it needs work, yeah. The other two properties, 930 Fourth Street, 538 10th Street, are properties the city already owned, has owned for a period of time, that are to be conveyed to Habitat, I believe, where they plan to construct new homes. The reason for this ordinance is, after some research and discussion with some colleagues, there is a statutory provision that would offer the municipality the authority to convey property to not-for-profit entities, but the best practice, speaking to some of my colleagues, would be for us to adopt an ordinance that in essence says, in the Home Rule statute, we are using this authority. In other words, we're covering our own backside by adopting an ordinance saying that we want to do this pursuant to the authority of gratitude by the Indiana Home Rule statute. So just another layer in the whole process of getting these properties in the hands of not-for-profit entities.
Okay. Any questions regarding ordinance 1192, and what we're doing here? If there are nothing, I intend a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1192. Motion made by Julie here, second? Seconded by John. Any further discussion? If you're none, we'll call for a vote. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Jeff, you may read ordinance 1192.
Hold my finger over that so I say it right. Ordinance number 1192. Ordinance authorizing transfer of real estate to not-for-profit entities. Whereas the city of Tull City, pursuant to Indiana Code Section 36-1-3-5, may exercise any power it has to the extent that the power is not expressly denied by the Indiana Constitution or by statute and is not expressly granted to another entity. And whereas Indiana Code Section 36-1-11-5.6 specifically authorizes the disposing agent of a county to sell or transfer property to a nonprofit corporation. And whereas neither the Indiana Constitution nor state statute prohibits a municipality from exercising that same authority. And whereas it is the desire of the city of Tull City to convey certain parcels of real estate to not-for-profit corporations for the purpose of preserving, enhancing, and otherwise rendering said properties beneficial to the larger community of the city of Tull City. And whereas certain nonprofit corporations have indicated an interest and willingness in receiving certain properties from the city of Tull City for the specific purpose of restoring, rebuilding, enhancing, constructing, or otherwise establishing suitable housing within the city of Tull City. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Tull City, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, the city of Tull City, by and through the mayor of the city of Tull City, is hereby authorized to transfer the property commonly known as 222 Ninth Street to Indiana landmarks. Said authorization shall include authorization to take all steps as may be necessary to convey clear title from the city of Tull City to Indiana landmarks, and to negotiate any covenants, restrictions or other agreements that may be implemented regarding the restoration and repair of said real estate. Section 2, the city of Tull City is hereby authorized by and through the mayor of the city of Tull City to transfer the properties commonly known as 930 Fourth Street and 538 10th Street to Perry County, Indiana Habitat for Humanity. Said authorization shall include the authorization to negotiate any covenants, restrictions, construction standards, or other requirements as may be necessary for the construction of appropriate residences upon said parcels of real estate. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in force and effect from and after its passage, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Tull City, Indiana, this first day of August 2022.
Okay, Counsel, I did verify that. I verified that address, so it's 222 is correct.
Yeah, there was some title documents that we received from the attorney that handled the tax sale that had the wrong address on them, but I verified it too.
I wanted to make sure you weren't giving away some property back.
We wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, I know, but I just, I mean, you started saying, you made me second guess what I thought it was, and then I thought, maybe I was wrong.
Yeah, there were some records that were wrong, but we caught it, that is, 222 Ninth is the correct address.
222 Ninth.
Keep looking at Fourth Street on this thing, 222 Ninth.
With that, all right. 200 block of Fourth Street doesn't exist anyway, that's in the river. So, Counsel, you've had the first reading of ordinance 1192. If there are no further questions or any intent, a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only. Motion made by Gary here, second? Seconded by Phillip. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jeff, you may read ordinance 1192 by second and third reading by title only.
Second reading, ordinance number 1192. Ordinance authorizing transfer of real estate to not-for-profit entities. Third reading, ordinance number 1192. Ordinance authorizing transfer of real estate to not-for-profit entities.
Okay, Counsel, you've had first, second, third reading of ordinance number 1192. If there are no other questions or any intent of motion to adopt. Sure?
So the Indiana landmarks, they're going to fix this house up and then they can...
So, that's what they'll do.
We're still gonna put together an agreement that will iron out exactly what they're going to do, how much money they're willing to commit to it, and what they have to do. So it's not gonna be one of those where we deed it over to Indiana landmarks and they're free to do whatever they want.
Those are time, I want it for them.
They'd like to get it, I think, from discussions that I've had with them, it's like soon as possible, so I'd say within a year.
And they will just do the outside.
The exterior.
They're gonna want the exterior.
They will do exterior improvements, and then whoever would buy it would be responsible for interior.
Is that two-story?
Yes.
It is.
It says transfer the property, so he's not...
We haven't transferred it yet, no. We're anticipating putting together a donation agreement so that they can get on there more quickly, and then we can resolve any title issues. The formal transfer may occur down the road, but we're wanting to get them on the property sooner than later.
Any further questions?
Do they like hire contractors?
Yes. Yep. In most cases, they have been local. There have been a lot of them, like here, there's some in Tull City, some in Cannleton. Don't know about anywhere out in the county, there may be some, but I don't know of those.
They're definitely open to suggestions on that issue, dude.
Yeah, they've hired local contractors a lot of times and stuff, so, I mean, and some of the stuff local contractors may not be able to do. Certain things.
Am I busy or?
Or just don't have the capability. Certain things, like what it is. So, any other questions? If not, we'd like to see a first, second, third reading. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion made by Julie here, second?
Second.
Seconded by Phillip. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Item C, additional appropriation request. Connie, I'll let you drive this stuff if you want, unless you want me to. I'll let you drive it.
I can read it and then explain why we're asking for what we're asking. It's additional appropriation Resolution 2022-20, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in annual budget. Now therefore, Section 1, be it ordained by the city of Tull City, Perry County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the debt and unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the city. We're asking for it out of the general fund, out of the city attorney budget, for litigation services for 10,000, additional $10,000, and that should cover us for the rest of the year. And then also out of the general fund, public works budget, we're asking for tree removal, and that is to remove five, six, seven trees here around City Hall, and one tree down along the walking trail behind the flood wall close to Sunset Bar.
And the one tree out front of what used to be domestic, that is probably in there.
I hope that that will fit in there also, yes, yes. Because I didn't know about... Uh, I hope that that will fit in there also, yes, yes, because I didn't know about that one when I did the semitization, but I think about, I think I'll have enough in there, so that's a total of nineteen thousand in, uh, our general, county general fund, and then in the local road bridge matching grant fund, this is on our community crossings, round number one for twenty twenty-two, is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five eighty-nine fifty-six, and that is the, uh, ceiling of the cracks, the, what Chris just talked about. Thank you, liquid road, to do those roads that were allowed from the community crossings grid, and it would be adopted this first day of August twenty twenty-two.
Okay, council, any questions on the additional appropriation resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty?
So that's what they've already done.
No, they haven't, they haven't done it.
They haven't done it.
No, they, they start on that. Correct. I've got a list of those, if you want to see it here, um, what did we do? Liquid road is, I don't know if you know the process, right, this one, yeah, checking and steel your driveway, that kind of thing, and a lot of other communities have done this for many years, uh, I went and visited with them, seen the roads, um, I like what I see, they're getting longer lives out of it, have repaved them, so, makes sense, you do these roads, it can help them last longer, have to repay them for a fraction of the cost.
Is this, I know you mentioned that maybe last meeting, so is this the first time that they will be using that?
First time we've ever done it, so, kind of a highlight for us, it's not for anybody else, but it is for us, so, we hope that will succeed. Any other questions? If you're none, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by John, seconded by Gary, any further discussion? If you're none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution stands approved.
And I'll pass this down for each of you to sign it, so let him get it signed.
All right, next up, we have item B, is a transfer request, so resolution twenty twenty-two dash one, resolution by the Tell City Common Council to make necessary transfers between the classifications within several, uh, budgets, general fund, transfer from utilities to, uh, full sellers, ten thousand dollars within the full budget. Transfer from the equipment to the general maintenance, general, excuse me, general ground maintenance, one thousand dollars, within the cemetery budget. Adopted this first day of August, I don't know what that is, twenty twenty-six. I was like, huh, that's a new word to me. Any questions regarding resolution twenty twenty-two dash, uh, twenty-one? Hearing done, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by John or a second? Second by Phillip, any further discussion? If you're none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution stands approved.
Okay, I will also be sending this down for you all to sign.
Okay. Um, item B, ARP funding request, and it was brought before the ARP committee last Wednesday for, for the painting at the pumps, stands eight through thirteen at the well fill, for a total of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. This request was discussed and voted at the June twentieth water board meeting to have ARPA funds paid for this project. When presented to the ARP committee, the members at the meeting, on the July twenty-eighth, they recommended that it not be paid with ARPA funds, so, it's up to this council, they just gave a non-favorable recommendation, this council can make it and pass it, they want, it's their money, that they're in charge of spending, so, totally up to them, you got rather, so, wasn't a favor, but you can overrule it, that's the beauty of it.
What was the reasoning of the meeting?
Um, so, they have a second price, which quote on it, which, and the price is already given out, so you can't go get a second quote, you already reveal what the price is, that's kind of the main reason, I would say. And, and I get that, uh, you know, you do want to get a couple prices, and there wasn't one in this case, so once you already reveal the price.
I'd last my bird, I'd price her, you know, two cents cheaper, and I'm just saying, I'm ready to bid if somebody wants to put their hand up for this.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so that kind of created a problem there, but also the water department actually, you know, ARPA funds can be used for things that doesn't have a, a rate user that backs up the funds, so we do have mu- funds in the water department that could cover it, where, if it was something for the park director department, they're backed up by the general fund, they don't have a rate user that does it, so, there's a lot of things to consider, that wasn't really discussed that way, but.
How low is the money getting in ARPA?
It's not that it's getting low, but we have, we haven't opened it up yet for small businesses and nonprofits yet, so we don't know yet what that needs to be, we did set aside one hundred and fifty thousand for round one of it, you know, depends on what's left, hopefully we could do a round two even, but we don't know that yet.
You check it away, then.
It's gonna dry up, and we didn't get as much as the county, and we got one point six million, the county got three point six million, and Tell City residents was counted as far as the county's funds, where, you know, we only got Tell City residents, so, in essence, how ARPA was done, the Tell City residents got counted twice, once to the Tell City resident, which went to us, once to the county resident, which went to the county, so, one point six of the counties is Tell City residents in it, but we still got our one point six. Sounds confusing, hope I explained that, it's very confusing, but it is, that's how it was done.
I think water department is pretty healthy as far as, as far as money, I think, I'll make a motion, we, uh, follow the recommendation of the ARPA again, I'll just pay it for that.
Okay, so, motion made by John, seconded by Julie, any further discussion? If you're none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'm just gonna oppose that, just for, I don't know, I might have stayed.
You can do that, you can.
Well, and I would, I would note for all of you that, uh, you know, the, the funds aren't spent yet, um, if the water department wants to put together some type of proposal at some point in the future, they can come back and ask, so, by, by saying no to any funding out of ARPA, that doesn't mean the council can't come back and prove funding later.
Just note this one at this point, yeah, we do have two years left.
And there's more money coming next year, right?
Well, we just got it.
Should be this year.
Posited our, was it August?
We haven't got our half, should be eight hundred and some thousand, hopefully some funding off.
That's what I thought, it's coming.
Just staying for a minute.
All right, we'll, one extension, all right.
Holding out for another day.
That's all in the new business, marriage report, um, the only thing I, my partners in pride will be, uh, Katrina's, upstairs, she has a shop there, they located in the old pedals on Main Street, they went in and they painted, we done on inside, she had a roof on it, we appreciate her investment. Yeah, it looks very nice what they've done, it might be, I don't know who's doing it, but, all I know is that she's gonna be doing that, she told me at one point soon, I don't want to do it. Yeah, it's there in the four hundred block on Main Street, used to be the fire basket and then pedals for several years, so, we appreciate Katrina, she bought the building, we appreciate her investment, she started just right over here across the street, and